All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the State County Board of County Commissioners Meeting for June 8th, 2021 at 5:30. May I have a roll call, please?
County Commissioners, Octor.
Here.
Bartlett.
Here.
Best. Duffy.
Here.
Lazara.
Here.
Deputy Director James.
Here.
Director Lapore.
Here. That's the open public meeting law.
Ladies and gentlemen, the notice requirement of the open public meetings law has been satisfied with respect to this meeting specifying the time, date, and location included in the annual notice adopted the reorganization meeting filed with the county clerk posted in the administration building and mailed to two newspapers in accordance with the provisions of the law.
Quick time for the invitation.
Oh God, who provides for thy people by thy power and rules over them in love, be gracious enough to bless thy servants, our county commissioners in this county of Passaic, that thy people may dwell in peace and safety to our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Commissioner Duffy, please lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence to remember all the men and women who have died while serving the United States Armed Forces and or died from COVID-19, especially the over seventeen hundred residents of Passaic County. Also, please keep in your thoughts the passing of Stephen or Larry on June 6th, 2021. Mr. O'Leary began employment with the county of Passaic on June 6th, 2011 as a site aide at our Bloomingdale Nutrition Site location. Thank you. I have a motion to approve the minutes of May 25th, 2021.
Make that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Duffy.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lazara. Roll call.
County Commissioners, Octor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best. I know Best is on, but Duffy.
Yes.
Lazara.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. We have no proclamations, correct, Louis?
Correct.
Okay, next is the administrators' report. Mr. De Nova?
Thank you, Director. We have our annual or our biweekly update of COVID-19 response here at Passaic County. We have Dr. Gungil on the line who will give us her presentation and where we are here in Passaic County in terms of vaccinations. I think Dr. Gungil is on the line.
Yes, I am here. I am here. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm waiting for Mica. Great, next slide, please. So, good afternoon, everyone. We're still doing this because we still have, we're still in the middle of a pandemic, even though many things have changed. So, I'll provide you an update with what has been happening in Passaic County. So, today is day four hundred and fifty-one. Since cases came into our county, we have over sixty-five thousand cases since then. And from two weeks ago, we have added two hundred and fifty-eight cases, which is fantastic, being, you know, we were doing, you know, a couple thousand a day. Within all those cases, we now have accounted for two hundred and twenty-nine of the different variants of the SARS-CoV- virus, and the predominant strain is still the UK variant. Next slide, please. All right. Regarding deaths, as the commissioner mentioned, we have had over seventeen hundred deaths in Passaic County due to COVID-19. And over the past two weeks, unfortunately, twelve more residents have succumbed to this virus. We have had no more children testing positive for the multi-system inflammatory syndrome, and our COVID positivity rates now is two point zero two. So, that number is fantastic. We've never had that number before. And so, we continue to see trending down of all the cases and hospitalizations, et cetera. Next slide, please. All right, this is the EPI curve from the beginning of this pandemic to now. And you could see from about April to now, there is a consistent trending down to very, very few cases, which is really very encouraging. And if you could compare June 4th, which, so this slide shows the weekly average or arithmetic mean. And if you could compare last year, June 3rd, to this year, June 4th, you could see that the comparison is that we're, you know, you can see that we have come a really long way because of all the things that we have done over the year, and especially because of the availability of the vaccines. That has really changed the trajectory of this disease. Next slide, please. All right, so this is the percent positivity in a graphical presentation, and you could see how dramatic that is, especially the last few weeks. Next slide, please. All right, so this is a busy slide, but it has a lot of information. So, we're still starting on the left side. And this data is specific to the clinics that is run through the health department in Passaic, this health department in Passaic County. So, through us, fifty-nine, over fifty-nine thousand vaccines have been administered. And the bottom pie chart is showing you that we are serving about eighty-four percent, eighty-four percent of the people that we serve are Passaic County residents. Gender still remains a little bit, you know, pretty much the same with women, a little bit more than men. And, you know, the one that I like is the very bottom, which shows that we are actually exceeding the second dose adherence goal that the state has asked us to meet. So, that's a good thing for us in Passaic County. Next slide, please. This slide is showing the breakdown by race and ethnicity. And these are the vaccinated patients. And you could see that, obviously, the predominant race is white. It's sixty-eight point four percent of vaccines administered in our clinic went to persons who identify, self-identify as white. And on the right, you can see the ethnic group, Hispanic or Latino, and not Hispanic and Latino. And, again, a sizable amount that prefer not to identify as either or. Next slide, please.
Dr. Gungil, to be clear, though, that is only statistics of our vaccination.
Yes.
Not county-wide.
Correct. This is your, our Passaic County Department of Health's vaccination report. Yes.
Pretty good.
Yeah, next slide, please. All right, again, this is Passaic County, our, the Department of Health clinic numbers. And this is just showing from when we began on December 31st to today, yesterday, how many people we've vaccinated on those days. And the small numbers really represent when we're doing home visits and, you know, things like that. So, you know, we can only do a certain number of people on a daily, you know, basis. Next slide, please. This slide, again, this is Passaic County Department of Health slide, and this is just showing you the breakdown between first, second dose, and total doses so far. Next slide, please. All right. This slide shows the entire county with all of the persons and organizations that provide vaccines to our residents. And thus far, four hundred and fifty-three thousand plus, almost four fifty-four doses have been administered. But here's a really great part of that for me. That middle number on the right, just above that last, the big pie chart, two sixty-one, six sixty-four. This represents number of Passaic County residents who have received at least one dose of the vaccine. So, this is exciting, and I'll show you in another slide why it's exciting. The bottom number, two eleven, seven ninety-seven, represents people who are fully vaccinated. So, they've gotten their second dose if it's a two-dose vaccine or the one dose if it was a J and J. And so, let's look at the breakdown of that by race and ethnicity. You could see that six percent of the people who are vaccinated, fully vaccinated, self-identify as Asian, five percent self-identify as black, twenty-nine percent self-identify as Hispanic or Latino, twelve percent other, nine percent unknown, and thirty-nine percent white. And when it says white, it means they do not identify as Hispanic or Latino, which, as you know, could go either way. All right. So, this is exciting because it means we're really getting to where we need to get to. Next slide, please. Okay, this is a busy slide, but I want to, I like to show that because people can see how their municipality is doing. So, on your left is the data that I presented to you on May 26th, and on the right is the data as of June 2nd, which is the last date that we have received this data from the state. This data emanates from the State Department of Health. We don't have access to all of it, so they provide us with this information. And so, let's start with Bloomingdale. You can see that, that two weeks ago, sixty-four percent of the adult population in Bloomingdale had received one dose of any of the vaccines. Today, as of the second, six days ago, sixty-five percent. Let's use Hilden, sixty-two percent as of two weeks ago. Today, as of, as of June 2nd, sixty-five percent. Let's look at Little Falls, fifty-one percent, May 26th, and fifty-two percent on June 2nd. The city of Patterson, fifty-eight percent. And I believe this time, they have the highest leap, which is fantastic. Sixty-one percent of the eligible adults, which is eighteen and above, have received a vaccine, at least one dose of the vaccine. Let's go to the bottom. Woodland Park, sixty-eight percent as of two weeks ago. And as of several days ago, seventy percent of the adult population in Woodland Park has received at least one dose of this vaccine. So, for me, the good news is North Hilden at seventy percent, they're really good news, seventy percent. Pompton Lake, seventy-one. Wayne Township, seventy-two. And Woodland Park, seventy percent. We know that these, that percentage of the adult population has been vaccinated and at least have some level of protection. The second, the next column next to that are the ones that have done both. So, but as a data, as a metrics that's being used, not just in Passaic County, but the state, the country, and the world is, did the adult population receive at least one dose? So, they're at least protected. And that's the number that we're excited about so far.
Dr. Gungil, just, if I could ask Mica to go back to the last slide, where I think it's two hundred and sixty-one thousand, six sixty-four, with the assumption that people are going to come back for their second shot, and a previous slide you showed that we're exceeding even the state averages and that. It would be safe to say that, you know, hopefully by the end of this week, we're going to get to that two hundred and sixty-seven thousand resident number, which was our target set by the state of seventy percent of our adult population. Is that a fair assessment, or?
I would say by the end of the month, yes. And that, but, you know, the only thing I would say, so, so it's a couple of things, right, Mr. De Nova? So, it's yes, by the end of the month. And especially because we have such a high percentage of vaccine adherence, ninety-six percent. So, that means almost everyone who gets a vaccine with us, with all the people in Passaic County, are going to get their second vaccine. So, you know, really, I really believe that by the end of this month, we will have met that seventy percent of the adult population. So, that's pretty exciting. The young adults, you know, we don't have that data separated out yet from the state. So, that's going to be another piece because that means I'm going to have to change my, my presentation to include them perhaps separately and then cumulatively to see what's happening. But yes, if we continue our trend, we should be at sixty, sorry, at seventy percent fully vaccinated by the end of June 2021, which was our target, is our target. So, I'm keeping my fingers crossed and I'm, you know, doing everything I can to make sure that it happens. Next slide, please. Could go, go to the next one. All right. So, this is what it looks like in a pie chart. So, on your, on your right is the, is the donut chart that shows you where we are with, with, with our fully vaccinated people in comparison to who we need to get. So, two hundred and eleven, seven hundred ninety-seven, or seventy-nine percent of two sixty-seven thousand residents have been fully vaccinated. So, that's great. But the one on the left, which is the one that makes me excited, is that two hundred and sixty-one thousand, six hundred and sixty-four persons, or ninety-eight percent of the adult population in Passaic County, has received at least one dose of the COVID-19 vaccine. Ninety-eight percent. That's doing pretty well. So, that's the thing we're happy about. Okay, next slide. All right. So, what's, so what, what else is going on? So, we've been working, as you know, we've been at Modell's for several months now. We're phasing that down. The last clinic will be held on June 24th. We're doing, as you know, we're doing PCC in Monique, Camp Hope in West Milford. We're still doing homebound vaccinations. And we have a program that we're doing with the Economic Development Department, where we're going into businesses who are requesting our services to provide vaccines. But it's not just us, you know, this is a, this is a group effort. And so, the other health departments are, you know, sending out the list, and as much as they can do it, they're going out as well. And so, we have some other ones coming up. The ones that are highlighted are the upcoming ones, but we've done, as you can see, the unhighlighted ones are the ones we've already done in the community. And it's really, it's really making a difference with the numbers. And again, the other health departments, Wayne, Clifton, Patterson, and Passaic City, they're going out in the community as well. They're doing home visits. And we're really trying to get to this point by the end of the month. So, it's pretty exciting. Next slide.
Dr. Gungil, today, PCTI, partnering with Walgreens, did their first round of vaccinations for students and families of students today. And I think they said they had about three hundred and fifty people registered today.
That's great.
And I know Walgreens is going to do that, you know, throughout the state with, with schools to try to get as many of our children vaccinated. So, come September, they can get back to some sort of a normal educational experience.
Yeah. So, the, as you know, the Pfizer vaccine is the one that was approved for children ages twelve to seventeen, and so, or twelve to sixteen. So, as a result, the state, I guess, went into a contract with Walgreens to, contacted them to provide that service because using the Pfizer vaccine requires more specialized personnel. And so, it's really a great partnership because they're available to every school district throughout the state to make it happen for the young, the young adults. Okay. All right. So, there've been a lot of changes, and this just tries to, you know, put it all together. So, mask mandates have been lifted in indoor public spaces. But a lot of, a lot of the changes still gives management the ability to make the decisions for their workforce. So, that's a very important piece to understand because a lot of people just hear that, you know, you may not have to wear your mask, not realizing that there's a caveat. And the caveat is that management is allowed to manage in the way that they feel is safe for their staff and their, their partners. So, so, you know, many places are status quo because that is still the safest route that we know because we can't ask people for their vaccination statuses. So, we just basically have to do what we can to protect one another. And for this morning, this morning's meeting, an important piece of information came up, and that was the discontinuation of daily COVID reports that begins tomorrow morning. And the daily COVID reports were provided through the health department to the prosecutor's office. The prosecutor office entered the data into the CAD system so that people who are responding, first responders who are responding, would know addresses of persons who tested positive for COVID-19, so they could be appropriately attired. But because of the lifting of the public health emergency, as of tomorrow, we don't, we no longer have to do that. We were doing that every day since April of last year. And then thirty days later, we were sending a follow-up email to say remove those persons from the list. So, that has been, you know, an interesting thing because that had never happened in public health in New Jersey before, where we would let other partners know somebody's medical status. And so, it was, you know, was very contentious at first, really. But we worked through it. We were able to get it done, and it was able to protect our first responders, which is what we wanted to do as well. And, but it's over as of, as of midnight tonight. So, that was an important piece of information I wanted to share. Next slide, please. I think that's the last slide. Yes. So, the same thing, you know, make your appointment, get vaccinated, stay healthy, follow all of the protocols. The protocols have saved lives. And if we continue to do it, we can continue to save lives, not just for COVID-19, because people still die of pneumonia and the flu, although this last year was a pretty good year. So, thanks for listening, and if there are any questions, I'm here.
All right, thank you, Dr. Gungil.
Director, if I may ask a question. Dr. Gungil, I'm, I'm very overall, you know, happy with the report and happy that, quite honestly, that there'll be less reporting, which is an indication that, you know, things are getting more back to normal. We don't have to track every single of these factors. But in terms of vaccination, I think the numbers are very interesting, town by town. I'm very happy to see that in our urban areas where we were the most worried about vaccinations, that the numbers were actually, I think, better than what we, you know, could reasonably hope for at this point, and not to more than a percent were, especially in Patterson. And actually, the survey project already shows that communities of color actually are less hesitant than other communities right now. Black and brown communities are actually less vaccinated. So, they're less hesitant right now, even though they are vaccinated at a lower rate, which means we have to get to them, but they're less hesitant to, to want to get to it. So, that's, that's good news and positive, and an indication of the education effort worked. The number of concern about, it just kind of surprises, is that Little Falls is, I think by a decent margin, are low vaccinated community, which is very surprising because they're neither an urban community or an upstate community. Those are the ones I would assume would be the hardest to, to get, you know, access to for vaccinations. And they're also pretty close to our, our county vaccine site. Do you have any insight on that, and for why that may be, or is that just an outlier?
I actually, if I may, just jump in. Mayor Damiano called me the other day because I shared that slide with all of the mayors, and I believe the freeholders or commissioners as well. He believes if they're using the 2010 census data, that there were, I think, over three thousand students who were residents of Little Falls in Montclair State that are no longer there as residents. So, he believes that his population is overstated, therefore making his vaccination rate understated. I have not been able to confirm or, or not that information with the state. I'm not sure if, if their, if their total population is from the 2010 census, or I know the Census Bureau does update data periodically in between the, the ten years of census data being collected. So, I, the mayor obviously had that same concern, and he believes it's because of his population being overstated with Montclair State University students.
Is the shop rate, shop rate was doing vaccines too? So, is their information part of what we have?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It is all the information. If what he believes is true, it would make sense because that Little Falls number otherwise really makes no sense.
Yeah.
And those kids aren't there, those kids aren't there all year long either, so.
It really is such outlier.
It seems like a relatively, if we just assume those three thousand don't exist, I wonder what the percentage is. I mean, we can just run that number. But, you know, I think there is, I mean, I think we do have to be honest, that the poll data showed that there is, unfortunately, because of the partisan politics around this, there is more hesitancy in, in, and actually in white communities than there is in many communities of color. So, I think what we assumed at the beginning is not necessarily the truth now. So, I would be, you know, curious.
But when you look at similar communities, right, Little Falls is definitely an outlier. So, I hadn't really, until I spoke to Mayor Damiano, because it's obviously a concern of his, you know, obviously, he wants, he's, wants to and has been doing everything that he can as the mayor of the town to encourage his residents to get vaccinated. So, I, I've written to the state. I haven't gotten an answer yet. But once we do, we'll be able to take a look at that. I don't know whether the state would adjust that number and, and then adjust the, you know, the percentages accordingly. But at least we would have an answer as to why that number seems to be an outlier.
That, and in fact, because even last year, campuses were told to count their students as if they were there on April 1st. That may be part of why the number is artificially low. If the population of Little Falls is only eleven thousand, it's supposed to fourteen thousand, then they're at sixty-eight percent. So, it would be interesting to know if that's the story. It makes sense to me that that's the case, but I spotted the same outlier number there as.
I've scratched my head every time I have seen that because it doesn't make any sense. Clifton is their, is their health department, and Clifton has done a great job. John Beagle and his staff have done a great job providing vaccines. As Commissioner Octor said, they're, you know, not far from our vaccination site. It makes no sense as to why it would be as low as it is. So, hopefully, we'll be able to get an answer to that.
Thank you, Director.
Okay. Mr. De Nova, do we have to take any action to roll into the public hearing?
I'll leave that up to our Stephen Clerk, Mr. Rimhoff.
Okay.
I believe he has, he has to read the.
Well, no, can we just pause from our free commissioner meeting?
Yeah, I, I, I think he needs to, well, he knows what he needs to do.
Yes. Thank you. I apologize there, Director. So, you, you have the agenda in front of you, Director?
I have it right in front of me.
Okay. If you want to, you want to start with number one, I'll, I'll take it from there for you after you say.
Okay. Well, what I'll do is I'll, I'll read the top portion.
Okay. That's actually my, that's the announcement of the public hearing part. If you want to read that, you're more than welcome to. So.
Okay. State County Board of County Commissioners, the public hearing for the grant application to be submitted by the county of Passaic to New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, Urban Parks Program, and Green Acres Land Acquisition and Park Development Program. The purpose of this hearing is to obtain public comment on the application regarding the development of Dundee Island Park in Passaic, New Jersey. The following public hearing was advertised in the record in the Herald News on May 23rd, 2021, specifying the time, date, and location of the public hearing, which is today, June 8th, 2021 at 6:00 PM. Announcement of the open, of the public hearing, we did that already. Roll call.
County Commissioners, Octor.
Here.
Bartlett.
Here.
Best.
Here.
Duffy.
Here.
Lazara.
Yeah.
Deputy Director James.
Here.
Director Lapore.
Here. Motion to open the public hearing on the grant application to the New Jersey Department. Motion made by Commissioner Duffy.
Second.
Second.
By Deputy Director James. Roll call.
County Commissioners, Octor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best. Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lazara.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lepore.
Yes. At this point, I'll turn it over to you, Lou.
Okay, Director, we do not have any emails at public@passaiccountynj.org in regards to this public hearing. We have for the regular meeting, but not in regards to the public hearing. And Mike, do we have anybody waiting to talk in reference to this public hearing?
There are presently no hands raised, no questions asked, and nothing in chat.
I'll make a motion to close the public portion.
Motion made by Commissioner Duffy, second by Deputy Director James to close the public hearing. Roll call.
County Commissioners, Octor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lazara.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lepore.
Yes. Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Lazara, second by Commissioner Duffy. Roll call.
County Commissioners, Octor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy. Lazara.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lepore.
Yes. At this time, we're going to move into our county commissioner report. I just want to mention, last meeting, there was discussion and a lot of public comment on the Tennessee gas pipeline in West Milford. And there was discussion, and I think a motion made to pass a resolution in support of the opposition to it, that many members of the public had indicated. At that time, I had said that we would, I think it would be better to send all the public comments regarding the pipeline and all the opposition to it directly to the governor's office and let him, or his office, I should say, digest all the comments and take it from that point on. So there will not be a resolution, or there isn't a resolution in the agenda this evening to indicate what we did at the last meeting. If any commissioners have any issue with that, please feel free.
Director, if I may, you know, I live in that area. Historically, I never jumped on anybody, any town. I know the town wants it evidently. I'm not overly impressed with this company. I just hope the, we dot O R I S cross O R T S as far as safety concerned, and we don't have to look back and regret. And I'm not saying this board has to look back, but the governor and the powers that be. So I'm not, I'm going along with it only because I don't want to step on the toes of the administration of West Milford. But I think I've said enough.
Okay, moving on to Deputy Director James.
No, I'm good.
Okay, Commissioner Octor.
I just briefly want to say thank you to Sheriff Burden. You know, that we have a sheriff who is not always, he's not pounding his chest or quick to run to a camera every time he takes an action. But I was grateful that when I asked, he joined me at the Palestinian Community Center last week when they were ignoring some hateful threats and some direct threats to violence. And, you know, I know that, I think all of us can say anytime we call upon our sheriff, he's there. He's there publicly, we needed to show reassurance, to show that we're not going to take this quietly, that the county and our county sheriff's officers will be there. And I appreciate what he's done to coordinate with local law enforcement to make sure that the folks there at the PAC feel secure. And I know he would do that for any community. So I just wanted to commend our sheriff publicly during this meeting.
Okay, anyone else? Commissioner Bartlett.
Yeah, just want to remind folks that it is an election day today. It's the primary election for this year's general election. Polls are open until 8 o'clock PM. I'm not saying who you should vote for. But you will see, if you're watching this, you will see some familiar names on the ballot. But in all seriousness, the right to vote is the right to protect all others. So if you haven't yet, you've got until 8 o'clock PM this evening to go have your say in the Democratic or Republican primary. And then we will be off to the races and headed for November. So for everyone who has voted already, thank you very much for taking part in the process.
And point of clarification, Director, I know this question came to me a couple of times. The drop boxes in Passaic County are still valid, correct?
I believe so.
Yes, they are. I believe every drop box, every drop box is in the same place as it was as the general election in 2020, with the exception of the drop box at Carrados in Wayne. That was removed at the request of the owner.
Yep. And the only thing that you could do last year, and you can't do this year, is bring your vote by mail ballot to the polling place. That was a special, unique accommodation during the COVID pandemic. Now, if you've got to vote by mail ballot, you got at least one drop box in every town. Go drop it in the box. You can't take it to your polling place. But if you've misplaced your BBM, you can go to the polling place and vote provisionally on a paper ballot there.
Hey, thank you for that information, Commissioner Bartlett. Commissioner Best.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Director. Just wanted to let the public know of the outstanding work we have and all of the events we got going on in our county. Please visit us on social media, especially our Parks and Recreation Department, as well as our History and Tourism Department. They have some outstanding events planned throughout the entire summer at our county parks and our historic sites. Wanted to also make a special plug for the county's first annual Juneteenth event taking place on June 19th at Garrett Mountain Boathouse, at the Pat Deany Boathouse at Garrett Mountain. Starting at 9:00 AM, there's going to be live music, vendors, and everything. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Duffy?
Just a shout out to West Milford, the Parks and Recreation Department, what they did with Sandcap, Bell and Queen of Peace. What a beautiful spot. And also a shout out to the administration and our Public Health Department. Dr. Congrill has really done some jobs, a real classy and very, very, she got us through this pandemic. And I want to thank her for that.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Lazara.
I don't have anything.
All righty. I'll take a motion to open the public portion of the meeting. Motion made by Commissioner Duffy. Second by Commissioner Bartlett. Roll call.
County Commissioners, Octor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy. Lazara.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lepore.
Yes, just a reminder, anyone who wishing to make comment electronically or otherwise, you try to keep it to a three-minute timeframe. And I also like to remind you, any comment you made is a matter of public record. And Lou, I will turn it over to you.
Okay, Director, we do, we do have 26 emails in regards to the Tennessee pipeline. So Mr. De Nova, Matt, and I will be reading them into the record. So first, first one comes in from Liz Doyle. Hi, my name is Liz Doyle, and I live with my family in Hoboken, New Jersey. While Hoboken is not close to West Milford, I am speaking out in defense of those who live or recreate in and around West Milford. These folks who may be living and spending vacation time near the proposed Tennessee Pipeline compressor are being exposed to major health risks. During blowdowns, compressors release volatile chemicals and particulates matters into the air. These chemicals have been known to make residents living near the compressor station sick. West Milford Council has ignored the residents' concerns for the past four years. I urge the Passaic Commissioners to stand by what was said at the last meeting and stand up for the health, safety, and Passaic County residents by opposing the Tennessee Gas Pipeline proposal to build new compressor stations in New Jersey. What I'll do is I'll read two, and then Mr. De Nova will read two, and then Matt will read two. And we'll just keep going back and forth. Jennifer, this comes from Jennifer Sue, 205 Lakeview Avenue, Ringwood, New Jersey. The proposed TGP compressor station represents an environmental and health risk. It will be built next to the environmentally sensitive Monksville Reservoir. It will not benefit New Jersey. The Passaic County Commissioners should strongly oppose the proposed station. I am extremely disappointed the resolution opposing the station has been withdrawn. What a cowardly act. I urge the Commissioners to reconsider and join the voices opposing this station.
Okay, the next one is Diane Doherty from 19 Collins Avenue, Bloomfield, New Jersey. Please oppose this compressor. It is a danger not only to residents of Passaic County, but to everyone in the state. At your last meeting, the Passaic County Commissioners said they would pass a resolution against the compressor at the next meeting. That was two weeks ago. What changed? What happened? We should be told. By sending the comments to the governor's office carries little importance. Passaic County Commissioners are backpedaling. A formal stance against the project is needed. It is your job to stand up for the residents, our health, and our environment. Please formally oppose this project and protect the Highlands region, and in turn, protect everyone. Thank you, Diane D. Next one is from Alessandra Rafferty, 90 Reservoir Avenue, Jersey City, New Jersey. I share the concern of my neighbors to the west in this extremely detrimental effects of the proposed compressor station in Passaic County is a threat to precious drinking water, natural resources, and public health overall. The time has come to embrace a long-term vision for cleaner and greener energy sources. Sincerely, Alessandra Rafferty.
Eberhard Deereck, 107 Long Pond Road, Hewitt, New Jersey, 07421. Dear Passaic County Council members, I would like to stress that is your, your, my, and our generation's responsibility to preserve, improve, and/or keep an environment that our children and next generations can still flourish and live in. Therefore, please pass a resolution against this carbon-emitting expansion project, which does not serve our Passaic County nor our state of New Jersey. Thank you for your reconsideration and action to maintain and improve our environment. Kathleen O'Keefe, 148 Cupso Ave, Ringwood, New Jersey. My name is Kathleen O'Keefe. I live and work as a Realtor in Ringwood, New Jersey. People move to Ringwood to enjoy the natural beauty of the Highlands. I also currently serve on the Ringwood Borough Council. The Ringwood Council unanimously voted on a resolution opposing the TBG compressor station. I urge the Commissioners to do the same and oppose the compressor proposal. This project presents a threat to our protected wetlands and reservoirs. The Monksville Reservoir is located 2,000 feet west of the new compressor. None of this gas is for northern New Jersey. Its target is New York State. New Jersey and New York residents want to cut back on fossil fuel dependency. Increased methane from these compressor stations will exacerbate climate change. Both Governor Murphy and Governor Cuomo have committed to reducing greenhouse gases and switching to clean renewable energy. How can we reduce greenhouse gases if we continue to build new fossil fuel infrastructure made in the last 30 years? Please call on Governor Murphy to stop this project.
Okay, this, this message comes from Alisa Arama. Dear County Commissioners, I would like to enter into the record my comments regarding the Tennessee Gas Pipeline Compressor Station proposal. I was disappointed to learn that you reversed your decision to pass this resolution against the project. I urge you to pass the resolution and call on Governor Murphy to put a halt to this dangerous and disastrous project. I'm a resident of Passaic County and environmental scientist. I understand the detrimental health effects that these types of projects have on neighboring communities and how they endanger drinking water sources and the environment. I also understand how short-sighted they are, putting corporate profit and short-term gains over the long-term health effects of people on the environment and even long-term livability in the area. Your constituents have already expressed their opposition to this project, and you seem to be well at your last meeting. Please stick to what you said and consider the human toll. By town and neighboring towns source their water from the reservoir system that is directly threatened by this project. The chemicals used at the compressor station could very easily impact the drinking water as well as the adjacent waterway. I know this happens too, I know this happens all too often. Please help us stop the project before it's too late. You have an opportunity to protect the community, especially one that is beautiful because it is green and forested in the midst of so much development everywhere. We have already seen TGP's horrible track record destroying waterways in Passaic County and not even replanting trees that are supposed to when constructing the 300 line, 300 line project. How much more evidence do you need to know that TGP will not protect the constituents and will not make good on their restoration requirements? It is not fair for our constituents to not take a stand against this project. Is, it will damage property values, threaten numerous project environmental features such as wetlands, which already face pressure and destruction from other factors, and will make you, make your people sick. Furthermore, a compressor station is not in line with any of the climate or environmental goals that New Jersey, Passaic County, or even the Democratic platform has. Man-made climate change comes from fossil fuels. This is a fact. Governor Murphy wants to reduce dependence on fossil fuels. So why would you support new fossil fuel projects meant to last decades into the future? This project is also a direct conflict to the conservation goals of New Jersey and the National Administration, because natural areas will be destroyed to even build it, let alone follow, following its operation. This is a terrible proposal that so many people, so many more reasons that I have even stated here. It angers and frustrates me that you could support putting people and the environment in such, so much harm. There is so much evidence to support rejecting such a project. Think about the future. Think about the people and the wildlife they call New Jersey home. Think about how many 90-degree days were already had in June and tell me we don't have a problem. Don't be part of the problem. Please send a strong, clear message to Governor Murphy that this project is not ripe for Passaic County, and it's not ripe for New Jersey.
Louis, tell me where that resident was from?
Alisa Arama was from, from Clifton, New Jersey.
Thank you. Next.
And then Charles, this is from Charles Berg, Charles Bergy. My name is Chuck Bergy, and I reside in West Milford, very near to the proposed site for the TGCO compressor station. I'm writing this on behalf of my wife and I and countless other West Milford residents. Too crazy, busy to stay on top of this issue, yet very concerned nonetheless. We, we all think that this project has so many potential problems that there is no upside. We think the compressor station is a terrible idea, and the damage to our environment and our health is potentially beyond calculation. Please read into the record, Chuck Bergy. Amy Goff from West Milford opposed this project, as well as dozens of my neighbors. May it be officially terminated immediately. Sincerely, Chuck Bergy.
Okay, the next one that I have is from Ken Dalsky. He has no address, but he does sign it from the New Jersey Forest Watch. Dear Passaic County Commissioners, I am asking you to add your voice to many who recognize the threats these compressors pose to air, water, health, and the future life on this planet. This TGP upgrade violates the science and policies of not only international bodies, such as the Internet Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change and the International Energy Agency, but it also violates the spirit, if not the law, expressed in the New Jersey Global Warming Response Act and Governor Murphy's Executive Order 100 and his New Jersey Protect Against Climate Threats process. In order to effectively slow or stop climate change, we must not build more fossil fuel infrastructure. This should be even more apparent when the infrastructure is not needed, as is the case, as in this case, with the TGP upgrades. The communities it purports to support in New York, not New Jersey, will even benefit from stopping this project by requiring new construction to use heat pumps instead of gas for heating. One of the responsibilities of all elected officials is to protect its citizens from threats such as these. Compressors release harmful air pollution that can cause coughing, nosebleeds, dizziness, rashes, nausea, and long-term exposure can contribute to asthma, neurological conditions, dementia, cardiovascular disease, and premature death. Benzine, a compound found in natural gas, is a known carcinogenic and is associated with child Benzine, a compound found in natural gas, is known is a known carcinogenic and is associated with childhood leukemia. The March 10, 2020 edition of Forbes Magazine stated, "Overall, the authors claim that the loss of life expectancy globally from the air pollution surpasses that of HIV/AIDS, parasitic, vector-borne, and other infectious diseases by large margin. It exceeds the loss of life expectancy due to all forms of violence by N order of magnitude and that of smoking by a third." It also stated that the mortality from air pollution in the U.S. was 200,000 deaths in 2015. Blowdown events are a necessary part of the compressor station, releasing toxic chemicals for hours and even days. Residents living near compressor stations have had to evacuate their homes during blowdowns. Methane, the primary ingredient in natural gas, is 86 times more effective as heating, as heat retaining compound than CO2. It is one of the most devastating greenhouse gases, but all of humanity at risk, putting all of humanity at risk. The Pipeline and Hazardous Materials Safety Administration Failure Reports from 2006 to 2017 show Tennessee gas at 111 significant incidences within the pipeline, resulting in $89,815,380 in property damage and 19 federal enforcement actions.
This is the number, I mean, the three minutes are up. I have a timer on here.
There's just one last sentence, and then this is done. Are you willing to put your constituents' municipalities' health and properties at a similar risk? Adding more fossil fuel infrastructure threatens your municipalities and constituents, as well as you and your families and friends. Your job is to protect, not endanger your constituents.
Okay, also, under normal circumstances.
You know what? I apologize. There is an address here. It was two-sided. 21 Winfield Drive, Parsippany, New Jersey.
Okay, thank you. I was just about to say, during our normal public hearings, when we have them live here at the Commissioners' Room, we always ask the person making comment to state their name or address. Now, I'm mindful of the fact that a lot of these comments were sent in prior to even the public hearing being officially opened. But I would, in the future, if we're still doing this down the road, if you don't give your, just a message, if you don't give your your address, I don't think we're required to read your comment into the record. So unless County Council tells me otherwise.
Certainly, we could ask the clerk to, you know, when, as he receives these emails, if there is not an address, we can ask him to respond to the to the individual asking for saying. All right, my next one comes from Linda Lang, 2 Parker Avenue, Cedar Knolls, New Jersey. I request that you please block the Tennessee Gas Pipeline Company's plan to build a new compressor station near the Monksville Reservoir. Please call upon the Governors to stop this proposal. Thank you, Linda Lang.
Okay, next one's from Ted Glick, 500 Broughton Ave, Bloomfield, New Jersey. To the Passaic County Commissioners, I'm ready to use the President of the Organization 350 NJ Rockland, as well as a resident of the town of Bloomfield, which along with a number of other towns, passed a resolution in opposition to the Tennessee Gas Pipeline Project. I am disappointed to learn that you took no similar action at your meeting last night. I know that you were presented with many good reasons by Passaic County and New Jersey residents as to why the TGB should not be built. As you are aware, that the International Energy Agency, which has been a major supporter of the fossil fuel industry since its creation in the 1970s, issued a document last month, which said that if the world is to avert climate catastrophe, there should be no more expansion to the fossil fuel industry. The news story on this remarkable development in the New York Times of May 8th says it all. Quote, "To reach climate goals, all of the new oil and gas development must be stopped," Energy Agency says, end quote. Again, this is the International Energy Agency, not the Sierra Club or Food and Water Watch, our friends of the earth. I urge you to heed the call of the IEA, the Environmental Community in New Jersey, other towns in New Jersey, Passaic County residents, and I hope your conscience and do the right thing, pass a resolution opposing this unneeded and unhealthy Tennessee Gas Pipeline Project. Krista Fiori, 141 Island Road, Highland Lakes, New Jersey. Hi, my name is Krista Fiori, and I live with my family in Highland Lakes, not far from the proposed site of the gas compressor. We are in the Highlands of New Jersey, an agricultural area. This area is environmentally sensitive in more ways than can be listed. The compressor that was built in Middletown, New York produces a hard smell that can be detected from as much as 10 miles away by personal experience. I do everything I can to avoid that area. Compressors have been known to release so much harmful air pollution that they can cause coughing, nosebleeds, dizziness, rashes, nausea, and long-term exposure can cause asthma, neurological conditions, and more. Benzene, a compound found in in natural gases, is associated with childhood leukemia. This project is not safe for our community. There are documented cases across the country of residents becoming sick with compressor stations moving into their neighborhoods. The impact to drinking water in the reservoirs is unimaginable. The Highlands contains more than 311,000 acres of public parklands with over 14 million visitors per year. The beauty and relatively clean air and water encourage these visitors to travel to West Milford and spend thousands of dollars in local establishments. How can we trust that the compressor station and increased gas compression in this pipeline system and the noise, pollution, and smell that will come with it won't negatively impact tourism, agriculture, and the local economy in this region? And during blowdowns, compressors release volatile chemicals and particulate matter into the air. These chemicals have been known to make residents living living near the compressor station sick. West Milford Council has ignored residents' concerns for the past four months. So I urge the Passaic County Commissioners to stand by. Well, you said at your last meeting, and stand up for the health and safety of Passaic County residents by opposing Tennessee Gas Line Pipeline's company's proposal to build new compressor stations in New Jersey. I'd like to know what happened to change the Commissioner's stand. Please do not allow this to go forward, Governor Murphy and Commission, please. Exclamation point.
Okay. This this comes from Anna Jackets. Dear Passaic County Commissioners, I am a Linden resident who studied Montclair at one time. We are aware of the major risk to health, climate, and environment proposed by the TGB gas compressor. The amount of harmful air pollution compressors police cause coughing, nosebleeds, dizziness, rashes, nausea. Long-term exposure can cause asthma, neurological conditions, and worse, benzene and natural gas is associated with childhood leukemia. This project is obviously not in the best interest of our constituents, residents, becoming sick when compressor stations move into their neighborhoods. Their doctors have documented baseline health and other after-effects of toxic compressor pollution. The harm comes in many forms. Blowdown events are a necessary part of compressor stations, releasing toxic chemicals into the air, which cause an awful nauseating smell and noise, as loud as jet engines. These can can last hours or days. Residents living near compressor stations have said they frequent loud noises during blowdowns. Some have to evacuate their homes at these times. The proposed project is is near two projected reservoir, protected reservoirs, protected wetlands, and category-one environmental value streams. The Monksville Reservoir is located 2,000 feet west to the new compressor. The construction is an ongoing operation of the proposed industrial facility can lead to groundwater pollution from chromium, benzene, and other toxic hydrocarbons. 3.5 million residents source their drinking water from the Monksville-Wanacu Reservoir System. Of course, Tennessee Gas Pipeline cannot ensure that the construction or operation of the compressor station right next to the reservoir won't harm this critical resource. As the Western as the Western U.S. falls to drought, fire and colds, New Jersey is turning into rainforest. Over 10% of New Jersey's Highlands, about 110,000 acres, is agriculture, which with with some of the most productive soils in the world. The Highlands also harbors import populations of birds and bats. It provides a regional stronghold for several rare reptiles and amphibians, several dozen of which are classified as endangered. The combined portions of the Highlands contain more than 311,000 acres of public parklands with over 14 million visitors per year. The beauty and relatively clean air and water encourages these visitors to travel to West Milford and spend thousands of dollars in local establishments. How can we trust the compressor station increased gas?
Do we have much more?
Much more in this letter? Three more paragraphs, sir.
Time is up.
Okay.
Okay.
This, I have one more. I'll do two, do a second one. Lisa Lisa's Sandy Lands. I live in Totoa, New Jersey, and I have lived in Passaic County all my life. I adamantly oppose the compressor being built in West Milford. It would sit directly next to the reservoir for drinking water. It's appalling that this is even being considered. Do better. Thank you, Mr. Yon.
Okay, the next one is from Margaret Wood, who lives at 324 Germantown Road in West Milford. I oppose the two compressor expansion of TGP in West Milford and Wantage. The thought of being exposed to the volatile organist compound scares the blank out of me. If it passes, my husband and I may have to consider moving away. At your last meeting, you said you were going to pass a resolution against this expansion. For the first time in months, I breathe a sigh of relief. Now I hear that you will not pass, and my stress continues. Please represent the voices of your constituents and do the right thing. Pass the resolution. Let me try to explain to you the history of the TGP 300 line resulting in two pipelines that are connected. First, in 1955, Tennessee Gas Transmission constructed a 24-inch diameter pipeline called the 300 line. It is 65 years old. Sources Tennessee Gas Pipeline 51321 informational session and a civil lawsuit Tennessee Gas Pipeline plaintiff versus permanent easement for 1.7320 acres. On 51321, the West Milford Council arranged an online meeting where TGP representatives would answer our questions. I asked about the age and diameters of the two pipelines. The TGP rep said that there are two pipelines. The old pipeline is 24 inches in diameter, and it and the TGP rep said it was built in 1955. The newer pipeline is 30 inches in diameter, built in segments, and the TGP rep said the loops were started around 2011, 2012. These two pipelines are connected and share the same pressurized gas. My other source of information was a lawsuit Tennessee Gas Pipeline plaintiff versus permanent easement for 1.7320 acres. It said, quote, "By way of agreement granting an easement in 1955 to Tennessee predecessor Tennessee Gas Transmission Company, Tennessee owned an existing easement and the right-of-way on the property. That easement is 50 feet wide and grants Tennessee the right to operate and maintain a single pipeline. On May 14, 2010, Tennessee received a certificate of public conveyance and necessity from the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, docket number CP09-44-000, to construct a new pipeline and compressor facilities and modify existing facilities on its existing 300 line as part of Tennessee's 300 line project. This project included the construction of eight pipeline loop segments. As a result of taking of the right-of-way, Tennessee's permanent easement and right-of-way on the property increased from 50 to 75 feet in width and now contains two pipelines. So you don't need to take my word for it. Here is legal proof of the TGP pipeline built in 1955 expanded through the creation of loops resulting in two pipelines. The first pipeline built by Tennessee Gas Transmission Company spanned from PA to New Jersey, crossing the Delaware in 1955. In 1955, a pipeline loop is a segment of pipeline installed adjacent to an existing pipeline and connected to the existing pipeline at both ends. In 2011, the 300 line upgrade project started. It started creating a second pipeline side by side with the first pipeline. It added the second pipeline in segments called loops. Each segment was.
You have much more?
Yes, there is quite a bit. And there are also, there are also attachments as well that will that will be part of the public record.
Right, but we will make sure that all these comments, as well as the ones from the last meeting, will be sent to the Governor's Office along with the attachments. So they have all the information that we have.
Okay, the next one I have is, there is no address on it. Claire Whitcomb. Dear Commissioners, please vote to oppose TGP's proposal for a gas compressor. There is no need for short-term fossil fuel infrastructure. Gas is a fuel that will need to be eliminated per New Jersey's Energy Master Plan. It isn't easy to stand up to the Governor and industry forces. The amount of jobs created by this project will be minimal. Far more can be created by investing in energy conservation and solar. Please let FERC do a stronger environmental review and an EIS. Thank you for your leadership.
Catherine Foster, no address listed. Hello, my name is Catherine Foster, and I'm ready to oppose the gas compressor for the following reasons. The Commissioner's commitment to oppose the project at their last meeting. At the last Commissioners' Meeting, you said that you oppose the compressors and need to pass a resolution calling on the Governor to kill the project. I don't know what happened to make you change your minds, but I ask that you oppose this project to protect your constituents in the Highlands region. Strong federal review pending. Just two days after the last Commissioners' Meeting, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission announced that they would be conducting a stronger environmental review by doing an environmental impact statement. Perk understands that there are significant environmental and climate risks associated with this project. Please do the right thing, stand up for your constituents, and I urge the Governor to stop the project. Safety risk. The three new compressor station would meet higher volumes of gas pumped at a greater pressure through a pipeline system, parts of which are now 65 years old, and would increase the risks of leaks and even explosions along the pipeline route through densely populated residential areas and under the Monksville Reservoir. Many portions of the pipeline system are over 15 years beyond the useful lifespan of steel pipelines. And if this project is approved, we can expect TGP to dig up our communities again in the near future to replace these aging pipes. This this would wreak havoc in many communities. TGP Company is proposing to have this facility monitored remotely from Texas with only one worker on-site during daytime hours. Local first responders are not trained to deal with these sorts of disasters, which could easily turn into a massive forest fire in these heavily wooded regions. Burnt metal road only goes one way. There is no evacuation plane in place for residents living near these compressors or for campers at the camp located right near the compressor station. In the event of a catastrophic leak, fire, explosion, TGP has no plan to respond. Climate concerns. None of this gas is for northern New Jersey. Its target is New York State, and New York residents want to cut back on fossil fuel dependency. Increased methane from these compressor station will exacerbate climate change. The International Energy Agency just came out with a report that we need to slash fossil fuels fast. Both Governor Murphy and Governor Cuomo have committed to reducing greenhouse gases and switching to clean renewable energy. We can't reduce greenhouse gases if we continue to build new fossil fuel infrastructure made to last 30 years. Funding should be exclusively for clean renewable energy. We need a moratorium on any fossil fuel projects. These are only a few of the reasons why we need to oppose the gas, why we need you to oppose the gas compressors proposed for your area. Please speak out against them now before it's too late. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Catherine Foster. Julia Lawler, no address listed. My name is Julia Lawler. I have lived in Maplewood, New Jersey for the past 29 years. There are so many risks associated with this proposed compressor station, especially those who live nearby. But even for me, the risk of further warming of the planet from burning of fossil fuels is a reason to oppose this. Governor Murphy has pledged to work to reduce greenhouse gases and to move renewable energy, and this project does the exact opposite. I urge you to reject it.
Okay, we have comments to read into the record. Passaic County Commissioner was submitted by Sam Del Falco on behalf of Food and Water Watch, address 100 Bayard Street, New Brunswick. Hi, good evening. My name is Sam Del Falco, and I am an, I'm with the organization Food and Water Watch, submitting this comment today on behalf of our 3,500 members and supporters in Passaic County to urge Passaic County Commissioners to pass a resolution imposing the Tennessee Gas Pipeline Company's TGB's proposal to build a new frac gas compressor in West Milford. As you, as you said you would at your last meeting. We don't know why you've changed your position in the last two weeks, but we urge you to stand with your constituents who are calling on you to protect their homes, their safety, the water supply, the environment, and the Highlands region, which serves all the North Jersey as a place of leisure, tourism, recreation by passing a strong resolution against the project and calling on Governor Murphy to stop this. Just two days after your last meeting, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission announced that they would be conducting a more comprehensive environmental review by drafting an environmental impact statement. by drafting an environmental impact statement for the project, showing that there are significant impacts associated with the project. And two weeks ago, a report was released by the International Energy Agency that says that countries countries need to move more aggressively to cut greenhouse gas pollutions if we want to avoid the irreversible climate catastrophe. It's up to all of us to stop the polluting projects, especially those like the Tennessee Gas Pipeline compressor expansion proposal, which is not necessary, does not serve New Jersey, and is out of compliance with New York's clean energy goals and commitment. We understand that Passaic County Commissioners do not have the authority to deny or approve the permits, the project. By passing a resolution against the project, the Commissioners can send a strong signal to Governor Murphy that this project is not ripe for New Jersey. No amount of tax revenue or empty promises from Kinder, Morgan, or TGB lobbyists will make up for the serious catastrophe, a fire, explosion, a leak of volatile compounds into water supply. We already know TGP's track record in Passaic County in North Jersey. As you acknowledged at your last meeting, they have not been good neighbors and we cannot trust them safely to operate the risky gas compressor in the ecologically sensitive Highlands region so close to residents' homes and water supply of 3.5 million residents. Thank you. This message comes from Carrie Drosos from Hewitt, New Jersey. The compressor station needs to be stopped. Listen to the people who will most be affected by it. We do not want this compressor station because we want to maintain a healthy and safe life here in Hewitt. Allowing this to go through will pollute toxins into the air and put us at risk of developing health-related problems. The decibel level will bring noise pollution to the area. A reservoir, a reservoir and its plant and animal life will be at risk. Runoff will be harmful to New Jersey's drinking water, potentially harming the tremendous amount of people outside of our area. The equipment at the existing site is old and outdated, allowing for serious consequences as a result of shoddy parts that can leak toxins. The bottom line is block the compressor station proposed at once. Our towns and groups have spoken out against this project. West Milford Representatives need to do the same. The tax revenue from this project will generate, does not supersede our needs to safe place to live. Find another source of tax dollars and protect the people. Mr. Denova, unmute yourself. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Matthew Glassman, 9 Albert East, Bonachi Drive, Hamilton, New Jersey. I am emailing you to indicate my opposition to the Tennessee Gas Pipeline compressor Station, which is up for discussion tonight. Methane emissions from gas compressor stations are a big contributor to climate change, which Governor Murphy has committed to combating. I support a moratorium on all fossil fuel projects. The next is Andrea Mateo, 421 Hartong Drive, Whitecloth, New Jersey. Dear Commissioners and others, New Jersey is all about going forward. Now more than ever, we need to keep that forward thinking and do everything in our power to end fossil fuel dependency. Not just for our climate and environment, but for your health and the health of those you love, as well as everyone else. Please stand up for those you represent and this particular region of New Jersey and beyond. Please formally and with finality oppose the Tennessee Gas Pipeline. I can't thank you enough.
Joan O'Daly, no address listed. Good evening. My name is Joan O'Daly and I live dangerously close in proximity to the compressors. During blowdowns, compressors release volatile chemicals and particulate matter into the air. These chemicals have been known to make residents living near compressor stations sick. The compressors will force methane through very old and end-of-life pipes that pose a clear and present danger to everyone from West Milford to Westchester. West Milford Council has ignored residents' concerns for the past four months. While we appreciate your efforts moving this forward to federal review at the last Commissioners' meeting, it was mentioned that you oppose the compressors and need to pass a resolution calling on the governor to kill the project. This project weighs heavy on the minds of people across New York and New Jersey. What happened to make you change your minds? You must oppose this project to protect your constituents and the Highlands regions. As you are aware, this project does not fall in line with President Biden's visions for environmental justice, as well as methane being a huge contributor to climate change. I urge you to petition Governor Murphy to stop the project as it poses serious health and environmental risks to your constituents and to our earth. The next one is from David Bryan, no address listed. At the last Commissioners' meeting, you said that you oppose the compressors and need to pass a resolution calling on the governor to kill the project. What happened to make you change your minds? You must oppose this project to protect your constituents and the Highlands region. Just two days after the last Commissioners' meeting, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission announced they have been conducting a stronger environmental review by doing an environmental impact statement. FERC understands that there are significant environmental and climate risks associated with this project. You must do the right thing, stand up for your constituents, and urge the governor to stop this project. Three new compressor stations would mean higher volumes of gas would be pumped at a greater pressure through the pipeline system, parts of which are now 65 years old and would increase the risks of leaks and even explosions along the pipeline route through densely populated residential areas and under the Monksville Reservoir. Many portions of the pipeline system are over 15 years beyond the useful lifespan of steel pipelines. And if this project is approved, we can expect TGP to dig up our communities again in the near future to replace these aging pipelines. Aging pipes, excuse me. TGP Company is proposing to have this facility monitored remotely from Texas with only one worker on site during daytime hours. Local first responders are not trained to deal with these sorts of disasters which could easily turn into a massive forest fire in these heavily wooded regions. Burnt metal road only goes one way. There is also no evacuation plan in place for residents living near these compressors or for campers at the camp located right near the compressor station. In the event of a catastrophic leak, fire, explosion, TGP has no plan to respond. None of this gas is for northern New Jersey. Its target is New York State and New York residents want to cut back on fossil fuel dependency. Increased methane from these compressor stations will exacerbate climate change. The International Energy Agency just came out with a report that we need to slash fossil fuels fast. Both Governor Murphy and Governor Cuomo have committed to reducing greenhouse gases and switching to clean renewable energy. We can't reduce greenhouse gases if we continue to build new fossil fuel infrastructure made to last 30 years. Funding should be for clean renewable energy. We need a moratorium on fossil fuel projects. In the last decade, Tennessee Gas Pipeline caused substantial damage to Passaic County when constructing the 300 line project. There was significant damage to Lake Lookover at Bear Fort Waters in West Milford, which included siltation and destruction of waterways through mudslides, which increased flooding and impacted drinking water wells. To make matters worse, TGP was required to replant trees that were clear-cut and only 200 out of the 2,500 were planted, according to the DEP. And of those were not of proper height and thickness and not a single tree was planted of the 1440 required on Hamburg Mountain Vernon. With this track record, we cannot trust the TGP will not severely damage our communities and they will repair the damage if they do. According to the pipeline.
We're beyond the limit.
Yeah, there's 10 more paragraphs. I'll make sure Lou has it to cement in the record. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Denova, do you have any more?
Yes, I do, Louis.
Okay, if you can, you can read them then.
Sure.
Thank you.
Let me also turn my video on. The next one is from Lou DeFalco, 31 Dickerson Road, Dunville, New Jersey. The gas compressors are simply a bad idea that favors only those who will reap an immediate profit. First compressed gas being brought into New Jersey neighborhoods that will ultimately be used for New York residents is an unsafe undertaking, putting nearby communities in tremendous danger. Regardless of the safety protocols, an accident is often unavoidable, if not inevitable. Even a leak would have a tremendous negative effect on the environment and health of local residents for miles. Secondly, we, as a state, show the nation that we no longer support initiatives from fossil fuel industry. New Jersey should and must become a leader among states in renewable energy. The idea of allowing more natural gas projects in an era where insurmountable scientific data warns of climate catastrophe is simply unthinkable. It's time we move into the future and natural gas is not the answer.
Mr. Denova, what was the location, address?
31 Dickerson Road, Dunville, D E W N V I L L E, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Okay, the next is Brian Sandalands and he lives in Totowa. I live in Totowa with my family and have many loved ones in towns whose drinking water comes from the reservoir right next to the planned compressor station. I urge the Passaic County Commissioners to stand by what you said at your last meeting and stand up for the health and safety of Passaic County residents by opposing Tennessee Gas Pipeline Company's proposal to build new compressor stations in North Jersey. That is all that I have.
Okay. Director, Mike has, I believe, four people there waiting to speak. And I, he will call them up, but I just remind the speakers that they have three minutes in their public comments and state their name and their address.
Ms. Schnackenberg, you are our first. I'm going to unmute you now.
Okay, Anne Schnackenberg, 268 Washington Ave, Clifton, New Jersey. Quickly, from before Dundee Park, Nice Park. I hope you're consulting the Native Americans about the historic value of that area and have an opportunity to educate the public of what used to be there. Looking forward this weekend to the BioBlitz in conjunction with the Friends of Garrett Mountain. It's going to be running from June 11, 4 p.m. to the next day at 4:00. And now to this important topic of this compressor station. Clearly, clearly people are looking for you to speak on their behalf. And it seems to me like there's a big difference between you guys going to bat for them, for us, and delivering, basically delivering the mail. So I'm going to ask you to hear them. It's, it's, you know, it's sad because it's an election day and you're kind of alienating your base. This, the property that you oversee belongs to New Jersey. It belongs to Passaic County. It doesn't belong to New York or Tennessee. Voters don't want this. I wasn't at the last meeting. I'm curious what happened if you've changed your minds on this and I'd ask you to rethink that. I'm sure people sent their own comments into the governor. This Colonial Gas Pipeline was in the news recently because it was hacked. This is a new reality. It's not just, no one's bringing, I don't know that people brought this up. They brought up the chance of fire and all, but honestly, this is like a security threat to have something so close to a public water source. It's a security threat. It's a target. It's unnecessary. It's bad for the environment. I believe the president wants to protect 30% of public land open space by 2030. There's a 30 by 30 initiative. This is a sensitive area, but it's clearly it's bad for the environment, bad for public health, bad for public safety. And people are looking to you guys for leadership on this. This does not benefit your constituents. And, all right, so, you know, pretty much we've established it's bad news. There's still time, so please protect our public resources and safety. There's still time. You could be heroes. Please, you know, take a firm stand on this important issue. Thank you.
We also have a comment from Ms. Alessio. I have, I just have to find you on my list. And you are unmuted, ma'am, now.
Hi, good evening. It's Renee Alessio, 39 Hillcrest Drive in Hewitt, New Jersey. So I was initially coming to this meeting to thank the Commissioners for passing a resolution opposing the TGP compressor station project. But I was disappointed on Friday to find out that the resolution was pulled, and so now I need to ask what transpired in two weeks to make you reverse your decision. I am not going to speculate, but the public wants to know. We understand that you will be sending comments made by the public on this issue to the governor. We realize that neither the Passaic County Commissioner nor the West Milford Council can approve or deny permits for this project. But we have been hoping that our elected officials would take a position through resolutions with clear facts that this project is bad for our region, the state of New Jersey, and would make climate change much worse. We have been already petitioning the governor, but it would help our case if our elected officials would follow the lead of the people, take a stand with us and be on the record opposing this. The governor can stop this and any permits needed for this project, not only for West Milford, but for Wantage as well. Now, I know that you may not want to step on the West Milford toes. I've attended the last eight West Milford Council meetings. I want to add that something is wrong when a West Milford Councilwoman says at a council meeting that, quote, "You don't know what is going on in the back room," end of quote, and says at another meeting that she took an oath not to tell. You know, you should watch those videos of town council meetings. What's going on? What can be worse than compressor stations attached to a 65-year-old pipeline that goes under the Monksville Reservoir? The people want to know. The positive news is that since your last meeting, FERC has decided to do an environmental impact statement, which has the potential to be a much more thorough analysis than the environmental assessment draft that came out a few months ago. We hope that when the EIS draft report comes out, possibly by next month, that the Commission will read it and comment on it. Your constituents, especially those in Ringwood and West Milford, need your help to keep us safe. And I wanted to thank you, you know, for the Highlands preserves. You know, I've been there. I was there when the opening day. It's beautiful. It's such an improvement from when my kids were playing ball on those fields like many, many years ago. But therein, the Highland Preserve is only a few miles from the proposed compressor station. So during blowdowns, there's a big chance that those fumes would be, you know, over Highlands Preserve. So, and I do.
Wrap up.
I just want to wish the Commissioners, Lara, Actor, and Bartlett, good luck in the fall elections. I know they're uncontested during the primaries. So thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you.
We have another comment from Ms. Orsi. Ma'am, you are unmuted now.
Hello, good evening. My name is Allison Orsi. I live at 41 Low Road in Wantage, New Jersey. And I'm attending the meeting to ask all of the Commissioners why you are not opposing the Tennessee Gas Pipeline project. I think considering that you got 26 emails and four people are in attendance speaking, that's 30 people who have, you know, spent a good amount of time and I think you owe us all an answer as to why you are not writing this resolution to oppose the Tennessee Gas Pipeline, considering all the things that everyone has already said about the health concerns, the environmental concerns, the contamination of the reservoir. I wanted to thank Terry Duffy for sharing. He's the only one who shared a reason, which was that he didn't want to step on West Milford's toes. So thank you for sharing your reason, Mr. Duffy. But I also, I wanted to ask, you know, if West Milford was doing something, if they made a mistake and they were doing something like they decided they want to burn their garbage or they wanted to dump their garbage in the reservoir, you would do something, right? You would stand up. You would take a stand. And I think from what Renee Alessio just said, there's something wrong there. I do not believe that any representative in this country should be able to say, "We have deals going on in the back room and I took an oath not to tell you." It is her job to represent us, everyone, all of us. This is not how our government should work. And I think that you, as Passaic County Commissioners, you know, I'm not sure what your specific task and your specific jobs require of you, but I think. but I think you are, you have the responsibility to protect the health of all of the citizens of Passaic County and I think you have the responsibility to step in when a town is doing something that, you know, I'm not sure, but could be borderline illegal at the very least is very undemocratic. So please step in and take a stand. I live in Wantage. I live near the other compressor station that is about to be built. And I spoke at my meeting in Wantage, passed the resolution. I'd like to remind you of all the towns who have already passed resolutions. Wantage, Montague, Ringwood, Hamburg, Alpine, Bloomfield, as well as Somerset County Commissioners and Ramapo College. They have all passed resolutions opposing this project because they believe it is bad for the health of our residents and bad for our environment. So please do the right thing, pass the resolution and please share why you are not doing this tonight, as you said you would two weeks ago. Thank you very much and I appreciate your time. I appreciate all the work you put in as Commissioners of Passaic County. Thank you.
We have another comment from Mr. Conway. Sir, you are unmuted now.
Hi, thank you. Thomas Conway, nineteen West Circle in Ringwood, New Jersey. I'm also Chair of the Environmental Commission up there. Couple of weeks ago, I went to that TGP slideshow. It was a joke and they didn't allow questions or anything. I'd be happy to debate them in public, including in front of your commission. But as a town that works a hundred percent in the Highlands, this is just a slap in the face. We can't build a garage up here, but they can put this pollution-spewing compressing station right next to the reservoir. That really is a joke. And TPC's track record is also a joke. They've broken all their promises. The work from almost a decade ago still does not have plants taking roots. It's a scar through our forests and that needs to be recognized. Let's get them to clean up their first job before we allow them to do the second. And even if we put aside the drinking water and the emissions, New York has an aggressive climate goal. New Jersey has it. This involves heat pumps, not more natural gas. Methane's the main ingredient. This lasts ten years in the atmosphere. C O two lasts much longer. If we want to make an immediate effect on our atmosphere, we need to cut down on natural gas. Let's also keep in mind, this isn't to feed New York's demand for existing homes. This is for new development with New York and New Jersey's climate plans. The idea that we're pumping in fracked gas for new development makes absolutely no sense. New York has banned fracking, but apparently they're willing to accept fracked gas from Pennsylvania and pump it right into their homes. West Milford, they're being bribed with a lie. This commission needs to take a stance for the truth. The TP record is clear. They say one thing and they do another. And it's not enough to punt this to the governor. We need you to speak up or forever remain silent on all environmental issues. This silence is a clear fail. Please reconsider this meetingless stance of sending things to the governor. You ran unopposed today in the primary, but if you continue to disregard the environment, that very well may change. And this inaction will certainly be brought up if there is a pipeline disaster or hack that causes that compression station to keep pumping out bad gas. Your disinaction by a very strong Democratic county really casts doubt on the Democratic climate plans for our state and for New York state. It seems like it's just a ruse and we're all basically admitting that as we feed New York's addiction to natural gas. And when we talk about stepping on toes, that rings hollow on me, especially as we're approaching the Fourth of July where our founding fathers signed a document that meant death if they lost their cause. We certainly have fallen pretty far from that. But in summary, you're on the wrong side of history. It's not too late to protect the residents. This commission can speak up. It can resist a project that's wrong with a company that has a history of abusing our area. Northern Passaic County is at risk. We protect our state's drinking water and we need our whole county to stand united to keep those protections in place. They are coming in under a loophole of the Highlands Act that allows public utilities to put in expansions, but that's for adding a power line for a local business, not interstate fuel going right through a reservoir. Thank you for your time today and good luck with this.
That is all the commenters that we have.
Lou, we have anything else?
No, Director.
Okay, at this time, I'll take a motion to, hold on a second. Close public portion? Take a motion, close public portion? Don't move. Make the motion. Second by Commissioner Duffy, second by Commissioner Bartlett. Roll call.
County Commissioners, Actor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lazara.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes, as I stated earlier, these comments made today regarding the pipeline and the comments in their entirety from the last meeting will be sent to the governor's office for his review. Next is the consent agenda. I know we have four late starters. Do we have any more than that, County Council?
No, Director, through you, there's four late starters. I'll read you the titles now. L forty-two, Resolution authorizing an award of contract to William J. Guarini, Inc. for the boiler replacement at the Hinchcliffe Manor Building pursuant to NJSA forty-eight, colon, eleven dash four, et cec. L forty-three, Resolution to authorize a contract modification between the Department of Human Services and Morris County Prevention is key for the period of August one, twenty twenty-one to July thirty-one, twenty twenty-two, pursuant to NJAC five, colon, thirty dash eleven point six, et cec. L forty-four, Resolution exercising the second one-year option to the agencies listed herein for calendar year twenty twenty-one to provide services for the homeless and transportation services for those in need pursuant to NJSA forty-eight, colon, eleven dash four point one. And L forty-five, A Resolution authorizing a grant application by the County Passaic to the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection Urban Initiative Grant Program for the Dundee Island Phase Two Project pursuant to NJSA forty, colon, twenty dash one. There's no need for executive session and just a reminder to the Commissioners that if you have any resolutions you want removed from the consent agenda to make that resolution through the Director.
Commissioners, any questions on the late starters? Okay, I'll take a motion to add L forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, consent agenda. Second by Deputy Director James, second by. Been here.
Commissioner Duffy.
Commissioner Duffy, thank you. Roll call.
County Commissioners, Actor. Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lazara.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes, I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda, L one to L forty-five.
Director, before you do that, I need to recuse on L twenty-nine because the entity in question is a client of my law firm. Does that need to be pulled from the consent agenda and voted separately?
Yes, it does. Commissioner can just make a motion to remove it and we'll vote on it individually.
I'll make the motion to remove it.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Bartlett, second by Commissioner Actor to remove. Roll call.
County Commissioners, Actor. Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy. Lazara.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. I'll take a motion for the consent agenda. Go ahead.
And for clarification, it's L one through L twenty-eight and L thirty through L forty-five.
Right, I'll make that motion, Pat.
A motion made by Deputy Director James.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bartlett, I believe. Roll call.
County Commissioners, Actor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy. Lazara.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. I'll take a motion on L twenty-nine. Is that the one we pulled, L twenty-nine?
Yes.
Yes, I'll take a motion on L twenty-nine, moved by Commissioner Lazara. Second by Commissioner Duffy. Roll call.
Hold on a second, sorry. County Commissioners, Actor. Bartlett.
Recuse.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy. Lazara.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes, under new business, I'll take a motion on personnel.
I'm moving the personnel agenda.
Second.
Deputy Director James, second by Commissioner Lazara. Roll call.
County Commissioners, Actor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lazara.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. Need a motion on the bills?
Move the bills list.
Moved by Deputy Director James, second by Commissioner Lazara. Roll call.
County Commissioners, Actor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Duffy.
Lazara.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes, take a motion to adjourn.
Take a motion. Second.
Duffy, second by Deputy Director James. Roll call.
County Commissioners, Actor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
God bless everyone. Have a good night. Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lazara.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes, good night, everyone. Stay safe.
Good night, everybody.